Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome. We have two reportable actions from closed session. The first one, during the closed session, the Board acted to authorize the District Superintendent or designee to notify each of the probationary certificated employees presented in closed session pursuant to Education Code Section 44929.21 that he or she will not be reelected for the 2018-2019 school year. And the second, during the closed session, the Board acted to authorize the District Superintendent or designee to notify an administrator pursuant to Education Code Section 44951 that he or she may be released or reassigned from his or her position for the 2008-2019 school year. Okay, C4, Statements of Abstention. C5, Adjustments to the Agenda. I actually need to pull E6 just to make two small corrections. Anybody else have anything to pull? Board Member Request for Information. Okay, C7, Approval of Minutes of Regular Board Meeting Held February 28, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Director Pew, second by Director Sheffield. Roll call vote, please.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Twenty-eighth, right. Abstain.
President Close?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Bring us to C8, Approval of Minutes of the Special Board Meeting Held March 7, 2018.
Second.
Director Pew, second by Director Sheffield. Roll call vote, please.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong? Director Anderson?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Which brings us to C9, what probably everybody is here for, the Student of the Month Awards, which Director Sheffield has the pleasure of presenting tonight.
See if this works. Hello? Check, check, check. All right. Let's start with Gavin Erfay Mahia. If you could come on down. Gavin is a student who is admired by his teachers, peers, and anyone who is lucky enough to meet him. Gavin can be described as intelligent, hysterical, hardworking, and helpful. From the first day Gavin came to our school, we knew that he was one of a kind and would be an unforgettable student. Gavin excels in every subject, but he is also known for his kindness. Whether he is working out a challenging math problem with his peers, playing in the school orchestra, or working towards his next belt in karate, Gavin always puts his best effort into everything he does. Gavin was a student that we had heard about long before the school year began. Former students had spoken so highly of him and had mentioned time and time again how much we would love having Gavin in our class. He is a student that previous teachers have raved about and loved to teach. A student that teachers hate to say goodbye to. He is also a person that is just as wonderful as the hype once you get to know him. Gavin has many wonderful traits, but one of his best is his ability to work with others. Every time he's asked to work in group, Gavin does so without complaining. He demonstrates all the qualities of a leader, but he listens to the reasoning and ideas of his classmates. He is compassionate and has a way of talking to others that makes them feel like they have fabulous ideas, even if they're not always that great. He is always an excellent example of student behavior whenever you look at him. You should consider a career in politics. We'll talk. Gavin is also a wonderful speaker. He engages his audience and always keeps them interested in laughing. We really enjoyed his recent Genius Hour presentation on Bob Ross. Gavin's sense of humor always shines through when he has opportunities like this to be creative, and we're always excited to see what he will do next. Gavin always does his best in school. He makes sure to have fun and not take life too seriously. Gavin does, however, take his education seriously, but when the time is right, he is laughing harder than anyone. Gavin has an extremely bright future ahead of him. We cannot wait to see what amazing things he will do in the rest of his time at Biella, as well as in his journey after he leaves our little community. No matter what happens in the future, we're all sure that he will be successful and continue to amaze everyone he meets. So thank you and congratulations. If we could have Gavin's family come down, supporters come on down. Next, we have Christian Alcaraz Ramos from Comstock. Comstock Middle School is proud to nominate Christian as the Student of the Month. Christian is a very unique individual who knows how to harmonize with students and adults. He is always the first to say hello and ask, "How are you?" Christian's positive attitude and his willingness to learn makes him a great role model to his peers. All of his teachers commented how Christian always comes to class prepared with his assignments, completed on time, and in a neatly organized manner. His history teacher, Steve Murphy, says, "Christian is such a nice and respectful student. Whenever I see him in the hallways, he always says, 'Hello, Mr. Murphy.'" He's a dedicated student, cafeteria worker, and athlete. Christian always ran his heart out in cross-country. He has such a great attitude. Christian has displayed wonderful citizenship in the past two years he has been at Comstock. He is kind-hearted and earnest. He has been in our leadership class working on many school and community partnerships. For example, he has helped organize and bring in the Redwood Empire Food Bank, our Gay-Straight Alliance Club, and planned our annual Community Building Days where we have resources in the community come to our school. He has participated in the yearly Leadership Summit and provides a quiet, supportive, and intelligent example of collaborative leadership. Further, he has done the Morning Bulletin with the principal for the past year and a half, always being on time and ready to support. He is generous with his compliments and frequently expresses his appreciation for his opportunities at the school. Christian has also helped us every week for Fun Fridays by being the campus DJ during lunch. In addition, he has participated yearly in athletics while maintaining a strong academic average, and please keep that up. Right after the fires, Christian shared that he was worried about his family as his dad had lost his work tools in the fire in Fountain Grove area, business where he worked. His father also lost wages as his work relocated. This caused Christian's grades to temporarily drop. He expressed his concerns to the principal who brought it to the staff. We all decided that in spite of this, he was still our number-one choice for the award because we had 100% faith in Christian's ability to bounce back, and we were right. Christian is working hard to move his grades back up as his family recovers from their losses. Everyone who knows Christian is impressed by his determination, his polite and kind demeanor, and his willingness to contribute to the community. We are so proud of Christian, and the entire staff stands with him tonight as he and his family accept this honor. Congratulations, Christian. Let Christian's family come on down and supporters. Jude Gonzalez from Elsie Allen. Come on down, Jude. When Jude Gonzalez arrived at Elsie Allen High School this fall as a senior from Lake County, staff members knew he would grow into an exceptional student and a fine representative of our school. No matter what Jude has been involved in this year, academics, school relationships, extracurricular activities, he always puts forth 100% effort. He has challenged others to think critically, be open to new ideas, and to always defend their convictions. Jude has an intrinsic thirst for knowledge and, at the same time, a strong sense of self and confidence. He combines this sense of self with an incredible ability to show empathy and facilitation to others in need. This September, Jude had to face an extremely difficult challenge by losing his father. This incredibly intense, life-changing event surely tested his resolution and adaptability. Jude is resilient and looks beyond himself during times of duress. Part of his healing came when he was able to give back to others by helping with fire relief efforts during the Tubbs Fire in Santa Rosa. He organized clothes and supplies at Elsie Allen High School when the school became an evacuation center. His tireless efforts have left our community a better place. Jude said, "I represent my school whenever I go out and volunteer in the community, and I want to prove to everyone that Elsie Allen High School is a school that harbors respect and passion." Jude has tutored English learners, is a member of Interact Asian Club, and a newly-created Student Management Club. Most recently, he was the master of ceremonies at Asian Night, and his exuberant presence inspired the audience to join in and join the animated dragons and cheer at the limbo participants. Rafael Sanabria, our head custodian, states, "In my 23 years at Elsie Allen School, few students stand out at the level of this student." In the short time he has been here, Jude has fully participated in all activities the students organize. He supports peers emotionally, and I see that he is very sincere. Jude is a product of his strong convictions and his incredibly colorful experience as a young leader navigating through the world. He is already aware that even a single person can make a huge difference. We have all benefited from Jude having been a student at Elsie Allen High School this year. His presence has been a gift to us that we continue to encourage a more honest and generous world for us all. Congratulations, Jude. And if we could have family and supporters of Jude come on down.
Thank you, Director Sheffield. Okay, we're going to do the parent organization or school organization updates, and then afterwards we'll take a short break so that you guys who are here for the awards or the parent organization reports can leave then, okay? So we'll start with Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Thank you all members of the school board and President Close. My name is Emily Vincent, and I feel very lucky to be here. This is my first time at a school board meeting, let alone speaking, so I'm a little nervous. I'm the mother of three children who were enrolled in Santa Rosa City School District, and we have always, since moving to Santa Rosa when our oldest was one, felt so happy, proud, and grateful to be a part of this community and this school district. I am here tonight to give an update on the Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School, where my daughter, who is currently in sixth grade, is attending, and my son, who's currently at Rincon Valley Middle School, graduated from last year. We are a STEAM school, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics school -- I had to do that for myself -- that uses a system of critical thinking skills and differentiation to meet the needs of our students. We are proud that we have created a schedule where 50% of students are in the band elective, which is offered four days a week, and that we can offer drama, technology, and design as electives, too. However, it has been a hard year for our school, for all of us in Santa Rosa. At our school, a significant number of families lost their homes in the October fires. Twenty-one families of our 128 students lost their homes. A few of our students had to leave because, as everyone knows, it was very hard to find a place to live after the fires. Some of our families have found places in Healdsburg or Petaluma and Sonoma, and because of the incredible place that Shrex is and the unique school environment that it provides, they make the trek every day, sometimes an hour each way. But that is the commitment that I think people feel when they are lucky enough to be able to go to Shrex. I know that I speak for everyone as a parent of students at this school, that I really feel like I won the lottery. Because of the fire, our major fundraiser, which was supposed to be, I think, right after the fire happened, was canceled, but our family-giving campaign still was able to raise enough money to help with computers, science equipment, the scholarship fund for sixth-grade camp and professional development. We are now in the process of enrollment for the 2018-19 school year, and we have a waitlist showing once again the popularity of this national blue-ribbon, award-winning school, a prestigious honor awarded yearly to just under 300 schools in our country. This is not surprising to me when I found out, knowing the Williams and the other teachers who work so hard to make this school an who worked so hard to make this school an incredible place for students. It wasn't shocking, but it is an unbelievable prestigious award. Unfortunately, this leaves about 30 to 60 kids on our waiting list at Shrex every year. Many of the students who want to come would be new to our district, and we wish we could expand to allow them to attend. This is just a little snapshot of our school up to date, and we welcome visitors at any time to come and see what we're doing and to share ideas. I look forward to working with you in the future and to keep working toward expanding our children's potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Albert Biella Elementary School. Is there somebody here from Biella? Oh, hello.
My name is Erica Raffo-Roberts, and I am the current treasurer for Biella PTA. Thank you so much for the time to come and share today. My husband and I have two children who attend Biella, and we are so thrilled with the education that they are receiving there. In particular, the love and attention that they receive from teachers and the entire staff is amazing and very much appreciated. So I have to say overall, Biella is a really lovely, wonderful place. PTA in particular is delighted to use all of our fundraising to support students in learning. A few of the highlights: We are able to reimburse teachers for some of their classroom supplies. Last month, our family engagement staff, Michelle and Carrie, were able to invite Mario Quijas, who is a local artist and former Biella student, back to our campus for an art night where he painted the most amazing blue heron, which is our mascot. It's a 10 by 10-foot stunning painting, and PTA is really excited that we were able to reimburse Mario for his supplies so that we now have that painting, and we're really excited to be able to display it in the multipurpose room soon. We also had another family art night. Youth in Arts, which is an organization based in San Rafael, came to visit and thoroughly engaged all of the families and kids, and not only making art, but really making lots of connections with each other, so that was wonderful. Our sixth graders organized their highly successful annual fiesta to raise money for their outdoor ed trip, so we're thrilled that they were able to go on that. And we're also looking forward to our annual Walk-a-Thon, one of our really big fundraisers scheduled for April. We had to postpone it due to the fires. It was supposed to take place right after the fires, but we moved it to April. Finally, we're having our annual cuddle up and read event on March 29th, next Thursday, or two Thursdays, sorry. This event is wonderful because students and their families get to return to school in the evening and hear stories read by professionals from the community. The absolutely best part is that we all get to show up in our pajamas, and usually we have hot chocolate and cookies as well. Thank you so much for this time to tell you about our wonderful school.
Thank you. Comstock Middle School.
Yes.
There you go.
I'm Laura Hendrickson. I'm the principal at Comstock. My parent group is actually meeting tonight. We've got about 80 parents in the Comstock library planning our eighth-grade end-of-year ceremony, so I said I would come instead of our officers there. It's been, you know, an incredible year. We all know that we've had a lot of obstacles, but that also gives us a lot of opportunity to come together. And we really feel that at Comstock, the parents and the staff have come together in an unprecedented way. You know, in November, right after the fires, we got together. Usually, our parent meetings are about 50 to 80 people, but that November meeting was only about 20. So we were able to just gather around a table and share stories about how we weathered this horrendous situation. Fortunately, out of 420 families at Comstock, only nine lost their homes. However, many of our families are renters, and they lost wages, and they were displaced for quite a while not to, you know, also the trauma that our kids went through living southeast of Coffee Park, watching the sky that night and having to flee from their homes. And so we shared a lot of those stories together, and it really created an amazing bond. I think our staff really, it really hit us, you know, very hard how much need there really is in our community. So we were able to right away contact the Redwood Empire Food Bank, and they're there now every single week distributing foods to our family as well as. So we invited CCLA to join us, and so this is a joint effort between the two schools. We also did an informal rummage sale. We didn't charge anybody anything, but people brought lots of clothes and household items, and people were able to just come and take what they needed. So we meet every month, you know, as I mentioned, and we also meet informally every month for coffee just so that we can hear what's going on and what their concerns are about the school. Much of what we've designed curriculum-wise and activity-wise comes from input from our parents. Every year, they are involved in our school plan. We've taught them about the eight state priorities for LCAP and SIPSA, and they comment on that on a yearly basis. We've had a lapse in fundraising. We were hoping to take our students to Six Flags, but unfortunately, we only have about half of the funds for that. So tonight, the group is looking at what the possibilities are for the fun day and graduation. We did also have a, believe it or not, right, just a month after the fires, a huge family posada that we did in December, a big celebration with a fabulous performer, one of our students. He's a well-known Latino rapper, and it was really great. So anyhow, thank you so much, and it's a pleasure to be part of this school and this community.
Thank you. Hey, Elsie Allen High School.
All right. Good evening. My name is Mary Gail Stablin, a proud principal at Elsie Allen High School, and this evening, I represent, or actually, I present, the Elsie Allen Foundation. And they will tell you a little bit about what their work has been, and we do have a PowerPoint presentation that's coming up. It's getting repaired. That's not a good sign.
That's not a good sign.
So let's see, let's see. Okay, we hope we get some slides up there.
In the meantime, Mary Gail Stablin, principal at Elsie Allen, and Brian Farrell reached out to Willie Tomayo, the gentleman on my right here, to showcase what was happening at Elsie Allen High School. And must have caught Willie's ear, because right after that meeting, he got together 20 business and community members to help support the Elsie Allen High School students. And so we started a foundation seven years ago, and one of our board members, Ernesto Oliveras, he coined the phrase, "We're riding the bicycle while we're building it." And that was truly a remarkable event where 20 people from the community got together and said, "You know, we need to rally in support of the Elsie Allen High School students here" and give them the support that they needed. And year-to-date, we've raised over $800,000 in monies from our donors, generous donors from the community. We just celebrated our third annual fiesta this last Saturday and raised over $250,000. So you can see the tremendous support from the community, but it all started with a conversation, Mary Gail reaching out to Willie Tomayo, and then Willie, with his vast network, got together the people to kind of rally behind the students. We are pleased to announce that we just hired our executive director, Manny. Stand up. Manny started in August, and he's doing a heck of a job, you know, taking over the reins. But we're excited. We accomplished three things: scholarships, mentorship services, and student services. Willie will talk about some of the programs that we've started and enhanced over the last few years. So Willie Tomayo.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to address President Close and the other directors and superintendent. Like Mike said, Mike is our incoming president. Mike's been with me and a couple of other foundation members who've been there from the beginning. And quite simply, when we went over and met with Ms. Stablin seven years ago, many of us could relate to the students there because many of us also are first-generation college graduates. My parents didn't finish high school, but they understood the value of education. I was fortunate, went to a very good public high school, trained me, prepared me for college, and I made a commitment that I would come back and serve the community. And working with Mike and several others, we really have enjoyed our time at Elsie Allen, planting seeds so that the students can dream big, helping to prepare them, working with the teachers, the administrators, providing opportunities, this bridge between public and private. Public schools can't do it alone, and private industries need well-prepared students for the workforce. So folks like Mike and I and several others have put together programs, like our first internship program last year where we had Press Democrat and Redwood Credit Union and Exchange Bank offering to take interns, Elsie Allen High School students, let them work in work environments, giving them the opportunity to think about careers in finance. And then also last year, working with SRJC and Dr. Chong, we were able to put together, and the foundation funding, a CNA program, all because Diane Cutimora saw the vision, believed in the foundation, believed in giving these students an opportunity during the summer to gain experience, gain education, and to learn new skills, because many of them are using that to work, to help support their families. So those are the type of programs that we are doing. We're proud to be connected with Elsie Allen High School. One last unique feature of our foundation is, over the years, about the first five years, none of the board members had any relatives at Elsie Allen High School. Because we understand that the parents, many of them work two jobs, three jobs, they can't become connected as much as they would like at the schools. So now we do have a grandfather who is on our board, and we have a couple of alumni. So thank you very much for this opportunity to speak and tell you a little bit about Elsie Allen High School Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Willie. Is the presentation... It's not going to work. It's not working. Well, Willie, I think the superintendent has a small token of appreciation for you because we know that you've worked so hard and are so grateful to you for starting this foundation. I know that it really has been your hard work, and I know you have a team, but it's been your inspiration that's made this so successful, so we thank you. Okay, so we'll take just a five-minute break. We will call the meeting back to order and move on to public comment on non-agenda items. I remind everyone that this is an opportunity for the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda. If you have something to talk about that's on the agenda, you do that when that item comes up. And also remind you that if what you have to say is pertaining to a personnel matter, that you don't use this opportunity to talk about that as it interferes with the normal investigation process, and instead direct your comments to Assistant Superintendent Lee, who is waving right there. Okay, so we'll start with Paola Lopez. After that will be Ethan Foot and then Margie Bradylong.
Buenas tardes, estimados señoras de la mesa directiva.
Good evening, esteemed board members.
De las escuelas de Santa Rosa.
Santa Rosa City Schools.
Mi nombre es Paola Lopez, miembro del PFO de la Escuela Lincoln y madre de familia.
My name is Paola Lopez, member of the PFO of Lincoln School, and I have a child at school.
El día de hoy vengo a agradecerles su sabia decisión de mantener nuestra escuela Lincoln abierta.
I really would like to thank you for your wise decision to keep our school open.
Les agradezco de todo corazón que nos apoyen con nuevos programas y nuevas propuestas para que nuestra escuela siga mejorando y creciendo.
And I really appreciate that you're keeping our school open, and from the bottom of my heart, I thank you, and I hope you can keep on supporting us so our school can keep on growing. Thank you.
Gracias de nuevo, y muy buenas tardes a todos ustedes.
Thank you again and good evening. And I want to say that due to logistics of transportation and the little, small children, we're going to exit after this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ethan Foot and then Margie Bradylong.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Foot, and I may not have been clear enough when I spoke sort of off the cuff at the last meeting, but I feel that my two letters were unambiguous. All I asked was that the board agendize a discussion item specifically about the national school walkouts on gun violence prevention and how to best support our children on this issue. I made this request because less than a week after the Parkland High School tragedy that occurred one month ago today, it was very apparent that we are experiencing something very different than anything like we have in the recent decades. I grew up in Berkeley during the 1960s, but I've never seen anything like the response to this issue. To be clear, I am not asking the board to address a political movement. I'm asking the board to publicly address the widespread anguish over this issue, specifically as it relates to how our schools and community should respond to the calls for student walkouts. I do not understand why this isn't a policymaker issue suitable for your agenda. Perhaps it's best for us to agree to disagree on this point, and perhaps the board would consider holding an appropriately limited forum discussion on the topic, simply as a public service. I've had a child in district schools continuously for the past 18 years. I've never seen this level of widespread and sustained anguish over any issue before. I've talked with neighbors, parents, and teachers associated with over half a dozen schools in the district. Over and over again, people start to openly weep as a struggle with how to best support our children. Please help us with more than saying we cannot encourage student walkouts and talk to your principal. Thank you.
Okay, Margie Bradylong and then Amy Jolly, followed by Melissa Nester.
Nufer, okay. Good evening.
Margie Bradylong.
My name is Margie Bradylong, and I am a staff member at Correo High School. Happy Pi Day. I'm here to say thank you for the March 8th PD Day. Thank you for trusting in Correo to create our own day. The biggest indicator for morale is the ability to make progress. Our staff organized, created, carried off, and evaluated one heck of a productive day. Staff was excited at our unified morning session because they looked forward to their day. At the end of the day, they were happy but exhausted. They had been actively enrolled all day in eight different sessions, each which with multiple options. There were over 80 workshops for them to choose from. That's all listed inside your packets. The evaluation from each session shows an extremely high satisfaction rate. All the sessions were unified into a single thing at the top, so you can see how happy people were with the sessions they attended. Was that three minutes? Okay. Several of our staff, I also want to let you know that several of our staff have been working to bring a day of dialogue to our site on Monday. We had done this years ago, and they're bringing it back. On Monday, students will attend self-selected sessions. There's a variety of things available. Most of them are social justice-related, and I want to thank Director Jen Close, Steve Mizura, and Dr. Guzman for coming to lead sessions for us. I also want to welcome any of you to come and enjoy us, come and join us for the day or for any portion of it. It should be pretty spectacular. Correo is an amazing, dedicated staff of which I'm very proud to be part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Jolly and then Melissa Nufer.
Thank you for having me here today. I'm here to tell you a little bit about the Sustainable Pathways Program because I heard today with some of the CTE cuts that the Linked Learning Sustainable Pathways at Montgomery High School is at risk of being cut. This is a really remarkable program. It has a tremendous impact on the students who are in it. These are kids who are empowered and encouraged to do things like come talk to you, like they did last week with the Citizens Climate Lobby, who are encouraged to go and talk to city council members about improvements to their school community. The kids in this program have a tremendous opportunity to build networks between organizations like my own, I work for the Center for Climate Protection, as well as the business community. And it does something that's unique. It is a unique program to Santa Rosa. I work in schools all over Sonoma County, and I can tell you there is not another program like this here in Sonoma County that is drawing students together, building a network between the business community, between nonprofit organizations, and environment and climate literacy and education. It would be a terrible, terrible shame to see this program cut from Montgomery High School and to see the staff that is associated with this program forced out. So I know that Santa Rosa has some deep cuts to make. I implore you to not make this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Nufer and then Melissa Mattson.
My name is Melissa Nufer. I'm a science teacher at Montgomery High School. I don't like speaking in front of adults all staring at me, but I was told to pretend I'm naked, so that's what I'm going to do. Today after school, I found out that our sustainable sciences teacher was, the 80% position that runs the sustainability program at Montgomery High was cut. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the program and the teacher that runs the program and what it really looks like when you just cross a line item off your list for a budget cut. And I get it, you have a budget, you need to meet it, and I appreciate all you guys do to meet that challenge. Melissa is one of the most organized and dedicated teachers for the program and basically keeps it together, and she's been cut. Melissa Mattson is always involved in community events regarding environmental sustainability. Melissa also attends JC classes at nights to increase her knowledge base in the CTE sector. Just this week, Melissa was at training, working at integrated curriculum, was at a training, working integrated curriculum with me, science teacher, US history teacher, English, PE teachers. She currently is working with the math department on a creek study project. Students in Melissa's classes have gotten opportunities they would never had, like Hector Landa, who helped kids catch fish up at the Steelhead Festival, and Raina Thomas, who got to hit them on the head. The students, then there were the students that she took to an environmental conference a week, oh man, I can never remember where I am. Here we go. A couple of weeks after putting out flames on her own coffee park home, she was at a conference with students. She organizes guest speakers, field trips, volunteer opportunities for students. She was working on running an internship class next year to get people in the industry. She has connections all over town. This is her passion, it's infectious, it runs the program. The program's been cut. All of this is gone because crossing one name off the budget cut list. The whole thing will be dismantled. I ask that you reconsider this cut. Students need CTE classes. It's real learning. More than any time in history, we need to be teaching environmental sustainability from someone who is passionate. I seriously, I ask that you seriously reconsider this cut. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Melissa Mattson, followed by Celeste Palmer.
Good evening. I am Melissa Mattson, and I teach sustainable practices, advanced sustainable practices, and next year was going to teach an internship class. I also have a Point 2 position that is funded by a grant from the Northern California Career Pathways Alliance to run the environmental studies program at Montgomery and to be an integrated pathway coach for our school. By cutting those classes, you are effectively terminating the environmental studies program at Montgomery. Our program is a linked learning model. My students do integrated projects with English, math, US history, PE, and science. As a CTE program, we are eligible for CTE incentive and Perkins Grants. Last year, we requested $24,000 in funds, and we received every penny. This money goes for field trips, professional development, science equipment, crow books, and curriculums. As we do integrated projects, these funds not only benefit my students but hundreds of others at Montgomery. When you cut sustainable practices and advanced sustainable practice, you've got not just two elective choices, but opportunities for hundreds of students participate in projects. You also lose thousands of dollars in CTE that benefit all students at Montgomery. I have worked for the district for over 12 years. I taught SEC students for 10 years, but found I had such a passion for the environment, I wanted to teach it. I spent two years taking classes, becoming a solar industry certified professional, went to the College Leadership Institute for Ecology and Economy, and much more, I don't have time to list today. Fortunately, between leading special education and teaching CTE, I substituted for one semester at Montgomery. This caused me to lose my seniority. I think I have a little bit more time. So I do want to say, lastly, as a mother and a human being that has respect for all life on earth, in my opinion, sustainable practices should be a graduation requirement. Now more than ever, we need to prepare our youth for careers in energy and the environmental field. I ask today that you can reconsider cutting my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Celeste Palmer, followed by Lindsay Brusina.
My name is Celeste Palmer, and I am a sophomore at Montgomery High School. First, I would like to thank the school board for what you have done to the community, including actions to help with the issues of climate change. But I have learned today that the program, which has taught me a lot of what I know today about climate change, is being cut because the teacher who heads this program is being terminated. This very school board has passed a resolution declaring climate change a children's issue just two weeks ago. But what is the point of doing so if at the same time, teachers who teach the science of this problem are being terminated? Without sufficient education on climate change, mitigating it would be impossible because the general public would not understand and therefore would not approve of such actions. This is why, if this school board is willing to take action on climate change, the first thing you should do is prevent educational programs like the one at my school from being cut. And therefore, for the sake of both my generation, education, and the future, and our future, I truly urge you that you take action, as you promised two weeks ago, and prevent the Sustainable Practices program at Montgomery High School from being cut by not terminating one of the best teachers I have ever had, Ms. Mattson. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Lindsay Brusina.
So originally, I was going to talk about two things, but I'm actually just going to talk about one. So as a lot of you know, I am a senior at Elsie Allen High School, and I'm not able to walk with my class. I received my high school proficiency certificate, which some people think is a GED, but it's actually a high school diploma. It is the equivalent of a high school diploma in the state of California, and I could apply to a four-year with this. Therefore, I have, you know, reached the California standards to graduate, but not Elsie Allen's. The reason that I wasn't able to was because I had to spend a lot of time in the hospital soph-, or freshman and sophomore year. I needed help because I was unhealthy, and I could not make up those credits. I went to a school while I was in a program, thought that they were accredited, made up a lot of credits just to find out that when I went back to ECL in my junior year, that they were not an accredited school. I have maintained a 3.8 GPA since the beginning of my junior year, and there was no doubt that I would be able to graduate high school on their honor roll all four years. You know, I'm very active in the community, and I'm very dedicated in my studies, and I think that it should be something for the board to evaluate because I think that kids who do struggle, who could have made it through high school but weren't able to because of personal problems, should be able to walk with their class if they meet California state standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Payne.
I'm used to things being short. Just, I'm a teacher in the district for about 20 years. I teach business at Montgomery High School, so I'm well aware of the, and also have been on the school board as well, so you have some tough decisions to make with money. I get it. How to close a school. We were at this conversation not too long ago, about two years ago. I just want to ask some questions. As a teacher, I think that's what we do, if we can ask really good questions. So I'm going to ask each of you one or a couple. Who are we? What are our values as a district, as a community? What will we, how will we model those values? By following up the choices that the resolution? This board passed a resolution two weeks ago. Lots of folks watched it. I watched it at home, I was thrilled, and hooray for doing that. And from a business standpoint, this is the direction. This Sustainable Practices, it's in every business This sustainable practices, it's in every business publication, sustainability, thinking about those issues. It is good business. It is good business. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to reports and start with the CSEA report, and I think President Afonso is here. No, no report? Okay. Good to see you anyway. And then SRTA, President Lyon.
Good evening. Wah! It'd fall right off if you're not careful. Good evening, President Close, and Superintendent Kedemura, and members of the board. We're going to talk about the LMC a little later as an official report, but it sort of sets up the rest of this, so I just at least have to mention that we've done an awful lot of work on the last couple of months, working on ways for CSEA and SRTA and district office administrators to work on our relationships and also build systems and put things in place that make it easier and more effective for the adults to work, to make things better for the students. So we'll say a little more about that later, but an example of where some of this is paying off includes the PD Day on March 8th. The initial feedback that I'm getting is fantastic. Elementary students, teachers rather, were really glad to have collaboration time. They have lots of new curriculum. I think they're at five different pieces of new curriculum that they're trying to do, and that's an awful lot of work. And to be able to get some time to work on that together was really important for them. On the high school side, something like 50 sections were accepted, and they were done. And we have some polling going out. We did polling on the last one and on this one. We'll see if I'm right, but the scouting report coming in is that people are pretty happy with that. One of the complaints that I got was, oh, I didn't know that we could put that in. Like they were, you know, they were excited about that idea, and that's not meant to be a jab, but just that, that concept is exciting concept for our teachers. That teachers teaching teachers across the district, I think it's a winner. But it wins because the leadership of the people that work together, SRTA and the district office administrator, especially Anna Guzman and CNI, have worked hard to make that available. So I think that's a, I would say a win-win. I think it's a win-win-win because I think that that's going to trickle down to students too. So I'm grateful for that. Maria Creo is sort of off the charts in terms of, well, they're ahead of schedule on it. They've been doing something, if you don't know, they call MCU, Maria Creo University, and they already, the first Monday of the month, they have a situation where teachers are teaching teachers. So they've already sort of built a culture around, you know, stepping up to present something to your staff and being good staff members and participating. And with that already pre-built, they were able to pull off this day. You can see the, the number. If you were going to lie about how good it was, you wouldn't use those numbers because they're too good. Like they're not, it's unbelievable how happy the teachers were with the outcome at Maria Creo. I hope we can learn from that district-wide. What do we, what do we need to do together? And I'm saying "we," as in all of us. What can we do together to build in that culture of learning from each other the way Maria Creo has? So I think there are a lot of lessons there. I'm really glad that they got an opportunity to do that. There's something else coming up next week. We're calling it the SRTA Listen Up Project. It's a pilot project. It's a listening tour, basically. We're going to be at Piner High School for a couple of days to talk to their members about what's going well at their site and where the opportunities are to make things better, with an eye towards picking some things that we can work on together to make things better for staff and students at that site. And that's a pilot program. Hopefully, we'll learn good things about how to do that, and we'll be able to duplicate that around different sites in the district. And that only works because the administration, both Jason Lee and the principal, Tim Zaldonaro, were in support. And they said, yeah, come on in and do it. They could have, they could have shut it down. And instead, they've opened up their, their school and let us come in and talk to the staff, and we're going to share back the information we get and see if we can pick some things that we can work on together. So I think that's, that comes out of both Tim Zaldonaro and Jason Lee are on that LMC committee and working together. It's opened up a door that might not have been opened before. I also want to thank the board and the district office on behalf of the teachers of Lincoln Elementary and Cesar Chavez Language Academy, that Lincoln has been removed as a possible solution for a long-term site for CC La. That, that became really important to our teachers because they're worried about what they lovingly call the kids across the street, the kids that have to walk, that, that, that walk from across the street to Lincoln, and what a hardship it would have been for their families. I understand that we are not checkmark, problem solved on that. We have, going to find a solution for, for Cesar Chavez. And I'm really grateful that we've built some of the inroads with that Labor Management Consortium so that we can do it collaboratively. I don't think it'll be easy. I don't, I think it's a zero, I don't think there are any zero-dollar solutions, but I am convinced that we can find a way to take care of the students and the parents that attend Cesar Chavez and still take care of the students that are around whichever campus they land on. And it's going to take a lot of adults working together, making the best decisions that we can. So I'm thankful that we've made the progress we have, and we're committed to working with everyone to make the best decisions going forward. Lastly, and I say this with kindness and respect, but it just seems like I can't not mention it. It's been a rough week because this is the week that we've learned which teachers have been laid off in reduction force and some that were non-elected. And so, again, that's not meant to be a barb at anybody. I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything wrong, but it's a tough week for teachers. So if someone's a little bit edgy about it, or a little bit upset about it, or it's, it's normal, not only for the teacher who gets noticed, but for their friends and colleagues that are, you know, feels like family. Doesn't take too long in this business that the people you work with feel like family. And it's, it's hard. If you get a non-re elect notice, it kind of feels like somebody above you told you you aren't good enough at your job to keep doing it, and the teacher who got it probably feels like teaching is a calling. It's, that's tough. On the other side, if you've got a, if you have a reduction in force notice, that there's a pink slip and you may get a job back, it's just, it's just unstabilizing and it's difficult. We believe that there, there's a good chance that the people who've been laid off will ultimately end up getting a job back in the district through retirements. You didn't get enough of them by today or by tomorrow to have zero pink slips or layoffs, but we're hopeful that they'll come back. But in any case, it's a hard week. So we, I appreciate any grace or forgiveness you can have for people who are taking it tough. And, and as we work through this one, and we've got one more tough year, I think, together, again, I'll say that the work that we're doing with the Labor Management team is going to make that work, I don't know about easier, it's going to be hard work no matter what, but I think we're going to end up making better decisions because of it, and we can avoid a lot of pitfalls. And I look forward, as we continue on, to, to take those things that we've learned and make better decisions for all of us. Thank you.
So moving on, I'm happy to see you for the first time on our regular agenda, a report from the Labor Management Collaborative. Before you get started, would each of you remind the board and the audience who makes up the team that comes to LMC from each of your groups?
Tammy Afonso for CSEA 75. There are five of our members, Linda Zavala, Renee Clay, Robert Norton, myself, and Sandy Garcia. Your turn.
I'm on it for us. Well, there it is. Margie Bradylong is there. Tara Lyon is there. Catherine Howell and Toni Johnson.
And for management, myself, Tim Zalnardo, Jason, and Diane Kedemura. Aida Diaz, forgive me, Aida.
Okay. All right, so I've gotten chosen to start first. So the 14 of our members who were able to attend the Cal Turn Conference on March 1st and 2nd attended various pullout sessions, worked on our plan moving forward. Our tasks were chosen to be completed by, by Tuesday, as we come back together so that we are ready to make those next steps.
Well, I, I think I said some of it all the way, or what I said up there, but I think for me, the good stuff, the good part is, it's been a way for us to create some safety among the people that are on that team. If we're going to create a safe, if we're going to create trust, there has to be safety. You have to be in a safe environment, and the trust comes out of that. So one of the things I'm happy about is it's a place for us to have created that safe environment, especially the people that I think are on that team. We spent two days in Sacramento, and we got a lot out of that day, both with, we saw some really good ideas of what other districts are doing. It's always nice to see a district that has gone through worse trouble than us. There was, they did San Jose talked, and they had had a strike, and then after that, their superintendent went to jail for embezzlement, and then drama, bankruptcy, and, and then they've gotten through, not this superintendent, theirs, right? And this is maybe 20 years ago or something. And they were able to go from there and get to a point where they're standing up in a panel for an hour talking about what it looks like now and how much better that is. So that was probably the most empowering part to me. And the, the takeaways that have come from that were me is that specifically, Jason and I have been able to take risks to try to help each other get through some of these difficult things that I've mentioned in ways that I don't think were available even a few months ago. And that's sort of intangible, like you can't measure it and put it on a scale and, oh, we're 8.1%, right? There's no, can't give you a chart on it. And one of the things we've recognized is that it hasn't gotten to everybody else yet. If the 15 of us get along and nobody else knows about it, it might not go very far, which is why we're talking about it tonight, but we, I think it's the, definitely a step in the right direction. We don't have to, we don't have to get as bad as San Jose got before we start working on getting things better, and I'm grateful that we're taking the risks involved and having the progress that we're having on it.
And so I agree wholeheartedly with everything that Tammy and Will have said, and I just want to give some folks that may not really understand where this originated, I know the board members know, but some of the audience may not know. Tammy and myself, Socorro, former superintendent, Donna Jay, former board member and former president, I found, I got an email, one of those emails you get all the time, and I finally took, you know, maybe at that point in my career, I was still reading everything that came into my inbox, I don't know. But I read this, and I go, wait a second, a California Labor Management Initiative about building positive relationships between labor and management, that sounds like a great idea. Called Tammy, said, you're going to have to sign off on this, we're going to apply. We got accepted. We went down there, all of us in the Prius with Donna driving, which was an adventure in and of itself. But we learned that, and this is not a surprise to anyone, that research out of both Illinois and out of Rutgers, had, they've done a lot of research talking about how in schools where there is a collaborative relationship, positive collaborative relationship between labor and management, there's positive student outcomes. And I was like, huh, that's not rocket science. But how do you get to something that seems so clear and easy? How do you get there? And so that was where the journey started, and it's been really something that I've been passionate about, and I, you know, in the world of HR as well, mentioned, you've got to find the, the bright light to keep you passionate about doing things for our system to improve what we do for students. And so I'm confident that we are going to continue to work on this, and it's been, like Will said, it's, I have had to reframe my own mindset around what collaboration is and how every piece of our organization, each association, management, teachers, everyone, is part of the system, and we have to make sure that the system is functioning at its optimum level to ensure we're doing great things for kids. So we're committed to do this. We do, I still have homework, and Tammy reminded me that I have homework by Tuesday. Will and Catherine and I had a schedule, we meet once a week, but we scheduled the conference with a gentleman out of the CD who is, his project is to support this kind of work, so we're reaching out and trying to capitalize on resources that the state has to assist us to continue to do this and move it forward and, and to go beyond the 15 people to site-level relationships between labor and management so we can continue to kind of grow this collaborative model for our district. So thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to doing the work.
Thank you very much for the report, and I look forward to hearing about the progress. I appreciate all your efforts. Superintendent Report.
Yeah, so I want to just reiterate everything that was said about LMC in terms of the way in which we can work together. I know that probably sounds a little cliche because you keep hearing this over and over, but we are really beginning to see the fruits of the labor, and I think it'll continue to grow as, as we move forward. I have just a couple of things. The first thing, if you guys can get ready to keep the video for that second, the first thing is, as you saw from Mrs. Bradylong, that it is pie day today, and I love that shirt and would love to get one. I just wanted to mention that it was pie day, that there is a pie here today, and that one of the, this is in commemoration of the actual formula of pie, 3.14, right? Right, Mrs. Bradylong? Okay? So make sure I got that right because I was not always at math. The pie, there's many cute things, and this one is actually from Hidden Valley. So Odyssey of the Mind today is a fundraiser, they sold pies. And I think that it was brought here with the intention of, there was, you could eat a pie, you could throw a pie, you could do many things with a pie tonight. Okay, so I guess we won't do any of those things with a pie. So, but I did, and I heard there were many other activities throughout the school, even on this very busy day, regarding loving math, really, because that's what it reminds me of. It's like, you can love math. Even if you're scared of math, you can love math. I'm scared of math. I try to love math, but it's a good thing. Next, I want to talk about how absolutely proud I am of our district, our administrators, and most importantly, and our teachers, and most importantly, our students, who took today and used it as a way to speak up and speak out and stand up regarding Parkland and gun regulation and all the things that have happened, just to me, it seems like in these last few weeks and months and just, just so much. And so Beth Burke, our coordinator of communication, put together some video, some pictures of everything that happened today at our sites, along with a video that was made through Director, President Close's efforts and relationships in asking Representative Thompson if he would do a little video for us, which she was able to have him do very quickly. And so I'd like to just show this, not only because I'm proud of our, our district and our kids and our, and all of our staff, but also in memory of Parkland and the 17 who lost their lives, as well as the number of others prior to Parkland who also lost their lives.
Hi, I'm Congressman Mike Thompson, and I'm proud to stand with you. Teachers, parents, students, you have every right to be concerned. Gun violence is a real issue, and it's a dangerous issue. We can make changes. I've been fighting for these changes for a long time, and with you by my side, I know we can make progress and we can bring about change. I'm so very, very proud of everything you're doing, and I encourage you, stand up and speak out. Together, we can get something done. Thank you.
No more silence and gun violence. No more silence and gun violence. No more silence.
Thank you. It's hard to follow that. Thank you for putting that together today so quickly so that everyone could see all the good things that happened throughout the district. It is a tough day and it's constantly hard after these, these shootings and it's, there's, it's hard to even know how to make sense of it or what to say about it. But I think that the way that students are rising up throughout the country is absolutely inspiring and I hope that they'll be able to move the needle on the issue better than the adults have, which is not at all. I was at San Jose Middle, which I think was near the end of that video, and was really impressed with the students who'd made art pieces representing each one of the victims in Parkland and then, and I missed the beginning, but they spoke about each one of the victims and told about them. And then the students stood together in a silent vigil for 17 minutes. It was really moving. So I was really impressed and I want to thank the staff for working hard to make sure that all of the students had an opportunity to speak out and be heard and express their feelings in a safe and supported way. It's really appreciated. And, and thank Ed for helping me work with Congressman Thompson's office on getting that statement. It was a, I think that was, it was important that he, he took the time to do that and to recognize the students here. I have a lot of other things on my list, but I think I'm just going to save those for next time and instead ask our student board member Luke to say something now.
Good evening, members of the board and members of the community. There were large demonstrations throughout the district at 10:00 AM this morning to honor those who lost their lives in Parkland. But we did not just gather to mourn, we also gathered and came together to demand change. And I am proud to call the students in this district my peers. These are students who are unwilling to hear excuses from politicians about why this violence cannot be prevented. Students who will not forget what it feels like to have power. The power to direct the national media conversation, the power to put pressure on public officials, the power to influence legislation, the power we have by coming together and walking out and protesting like we did today. Now, to anybody who believes that students don't know what they're talking about or that we are too young to have an opinion, I suggest you take a look at the solutions the older generation has come up with because they're not protecting us and we're not going to accept that as good enough. Thank you.
Okay, we have NSBA, CSBA report and then tonight from Frank, Ron.
Just briefly, I will be attending another CSBA Legislative Committee meeting on the 23rd and I am, I want to make sure that I am a representative. So if any of my fellow board members, any board members from the area or any members of the community have any thoughts about legislation, a particular piece of legislation that's up regarding education, I would love to hear from you. But I am here to represent you and at any extent, that will be on the 23rd, so you can email me if you have any ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Kristoff. Okay, so we are moving on to our consent agenda.
I'd like to move items E1 through E5.
Thank you.
Need a second?
And E7?
Second.
Director Pugh, second by.
What about E7?
Back to that. Well, or do you want to amend your motion to include?
Yes. Accept. Fix.
Just hold on one second and let Director Pugh make your new motion.
I'd like to move items E1 through E5 and E7.
Thank you, Director Pugh.
Thank you.
I second that.
All right. Move by Director Pugh, second by Director Fong, roll call vote please.
Director Pugh?
Hi.
Director Fong?
Hi.
Director Kristoff? Director Anderson? Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Student Board Member?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries and so E6, I need to make a couple corrections on the record here. E6 is approval of proposed classified job descriptions. In the item, it says that food service dock worker should, is range 21, but it should be range 15. And the culinary coordinator says range 21, but should be range 22. So with that, those corrections.
I'd like to move item with corrections.
Second.
For Pugh, second by Director Sheffield, roll call vote please.
Director Pugh? Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Student Board Member?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, bringing us to the F items. F1, approval of QKA contract cost adjustment related to the Maria Creo field.
Good evening, Superintendent Kitamura and Board of Trustees. We're here tonight to ask approval of QKA contract adjustments for the Maria Creo Field and Turf Project. On December 20th, we presented this to the board and the board requested additional information and backup. So we've asked Steve Quoc from Katroki Quoc Architects here tonight to go ahead and answer any questions and he also has a presentation to go over to justify the added cost to the project.
Good evening, President Close, members of the boards, Superintendent Kitamura. Appreciate you giving me some time this evening to explain the Maria Creo project. I understand on the December 20th, board meeting, yous have some questions. So being an architect and stock and trade in pictures, I've brought you a few pictures to help explain that project. So, let's see. So essentially, back in the beginning part of 2017, Rick Edson came to us and asked us to give him a proposal specifically for the replacement of the field, of the natural turf field with artificial turf at the Maria Creo High School and also the resurfacing of the track there because it is aged and in somewhat disrepair and need to be replaced. So this is the exhibit that actually came from that contract, the board approved that on January 11th. And you can see in the project description, it's very specific because Rick came to us and said, I've only got this much money, this is what we need to do. And we explained to him, you know, that, that's the way our proposal would be structured. So it states just exactly that. And again, because a picture is worth a thousand words, basically, this is what we're looking at. Inside the red line, which is essentially represents the face line that goes, fence line that goes around the track, that was going to be the scope of our work and so the replacement of those particular facilities. So of course, all of our projects go to DSA and this being a public asset access project, it also had to go to the Division of the State Architect. At the very beginning of any kind of project like this, one of the things that we do is we have to actually do a topographic survey of the site. And behind me, Kurt Nichols, Carlisle Macy, Civil Engineers and Landscape Architects actually did that survey. And so what we found in the process of doing that is all of the paved area essentially around the track was not ADA compliant. So the facility was not accessible by the definitions of the requirements of the Americans with Disability Act. So in order to get our Division of the State Architect approval for this project, we had to fix all of that. So what, excuse me, what happened? So in addition then to the, to the resurfacing of the track and the new artificial field, we had to do the following work here, which you see on the bullet points. We had to demolish almost a half an acre of asphalt paving that again, was not compliant. It was basically had too much slope in it and replace it with a new concrete walkway. And I'll, again, I'll show you a picture of that in a minute. We had eight new drainage structures. In other words, we had to sort of redo how we were going to get storm water off of that so we didn't have flooding and other problems like that. We ended up adding 85 feet of linear, 85 linear feet of retaining wall so that all of the grading and et cetera would actually work. Again, there's another 450 feet of chain link fence that we had to replace because what we thought was going to work was now again, out of compliance and, and had to be replaced. And then we also had a request as we were going through the process to also do, redo the long jump, the triple jump runways and those pits as well. That was not, not part of the original project. So again, you can see the original scope of the project inside of the red line, basically the track and the field, but the, the green line shows you the expanded area of the project. So now all of a sudden, we're looking at having to create an accessible path that came down from the high school, across the little access road there, down the high school to the path to the paved area there. That's where some of the retaining wall and that sort of work went in. All of that gray area is all of the concrete that had to be replaced because it was out of compliance with the America, with Americans with Disability Act. And so you can see, it got to be a much, much larger project than we had originally talked about. So when we first met with Rick, he said, I've got $2,100,000 and we thought that was about right. Again, Kurt did an estimate and we thought the project was maybe going to be a little bit more than that, $2,230,000. And then we went out to bid and so now we have the contractors, what we call the Schedule of Values. Now we know what things cost. And what we found out is for the new field and for the track resurfacing, the project actually came at about $2,184,000. So somewhere right in between your initial budget and what our initial estimate was. The important part of this is the expanded scope that we had to do now to make the stadium accessible and, and conform to the requirements of the ADA, that scope was $2.3 million. So it basically doubled the size of the project in order to get this through the Division of the State Architect. And then a little bit about our costs, because I figured you might have some questions about this. 72% of all the fees that we made on this project actually turned around and went right back out to consultants. Kurt frankly did most of the work, so he got most of the fee. Our civil engineering and landscape design fees increased by $171,000. So you can see the percentage of increase. And then our labor costs on our end, basically because the project doubled, essentially doubled our, our labor cost. So that's why we came to the board and came back to the board and asked for the increase in the fees that, that we did. Essentially, you had a doubling of the size of the project. Happy to take questions.
Does anybody have any questions, comments? Director Kristoff.
Thank you for the information. We, the last discussion we had, it really had to do, yeah, I'm sorry to say this, but it's a little bit mind boggling to start out at 2.1 and have the amount that we're finished with right now. I don't know how we do that, how we can miss it that badly, even if it has to go to the State Architects and so on. I'm not accusing you, I'm just saying this is an example, is a case study. It doesn't really sit real well with me. And the other thing that Bill brought up last time was the idea of negotiating for actual work. And I'm not sure if contracts, I'm not a contract person, but the idea makes sense to me, rather than having just a trigger that says, you know, we're, this is the amount and then we negotiate down 10,000. To me, I would feel much more comfortable in the future if we, when we write our contracts, if we could have the language that says, you know, you know, your work for hours, this or this is what we did and then have it, you know, billed accordingly. But anyway, that's just something we talked about and I still feel is important.
If I may address that real quick, based on the comments received from that meeting, we have reviewed our contracts and changed some language within them based on the request from the board. So from here on out, I think you'll find that we will hopefully not run into these issues in the future. But as Mr. Quoc has relayed, right or wrong, the contract is based on a percent base of what the construction cost is. It's not that they're just asking for a fee increase because the price went up, they had to do extra work also. So it ties hand in hand, if that makes sense to you.
It would be, you know, anyway, I think the concept is, I understand the extra work, there's no question about that. But what is it and how much are we being billed and is it, you know, this just seems kind of amorphous to me is what it knocks to.
So maybe to directly answer that question, we will capture the scope upfront and make sure we gather that as, as much as we can so we don't have to add to it through the process, adjusting the cost throughout, throughout.
Yeah, I, putting my lawyer hat on, I, it would be helpful to me to actually see a time reporting of work performed. I think of architects and engineers as working similarly as lawyers, which is we sell our time and we report how, how we spend our time. So that wasn't the contract and so, you know, we are liable for this amount of money based on the contract, but going forward, I, I would request that our contracts require some kind of reporting of time spent, how it's spent and how much.
That will, that will be done.
Director Fong?
Okay, I have a burning question and it's related to this. Maria Creo is one of our newest high schools. If we can go back to that slide of the extra scope of work, I'm wondering why all that had to be redone? If it's a fairly new school, should have been compliant? Does anyone know?
Code changes.
Yeah, it's basically, at the time it was built, it was compliant and so, but the, the ADA has been, in particular for architects, has been a little bit challenging because it has been changing as case law comes along and as, as the code renews itself. Codes never get less restrictive, they always get more restrictive. And so what happened with the ADA was when this was built and cross slopes were allowed to be up to 5% in terms of, in other words, you know, five feet for every 100 linear feet, it can cross slope, that's now 2%. And so it's those sort of things that, that end up not being, you know, no longer acceptable. So as a public access facility, the Division of the State Architect says, if you want to do this improvement, if you want to spend $2 million to improve your fields, well, you have to make it accessible to the public. And so again, all of these rules kick in, those requirements are now much more stringent than they were. Elsie Allen's, I think, 20 years old. So, and so it's just that those things need to be, need to be updated.
Thank you.
Thank you. The better we can do in estimating on the front end, the better it is for the district so we can make decisions in how we spend our money. But yeah, I understand how changed regs can change everything. I've been there. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is an action item.
I move this action item forward.
Second.
Move by Director Fong, second by Director Sheffield, roll call vote please.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Student Board Member?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the explanation. Okay, F2, discussion item on alternative education.
President Close, board members, Superintendent Kitamura. On the November 15th board meeting, there was a request by Director Kristoff to come back with some information and percentages and kind of a follow-up on some concerns and...
back with some information and percentages and kind of a follow-up on some concerns and questions you had from alternative education. So tonight, on behalf of Dr. Guzman, Lori Fletcher and I are presenting a little bit of that data that we're bringing back to you now. And so I'll have Lori Fletcher, Director from Curriculum Instruction, go through the presentation for you.
So the first thing I'd like to note is that you'll see a few little changes in the PowerPoint here because, for instance, the date changed. This was supposed to go earlier and it, and it didn't. So the dates have changed and there's another place where I added some percentages and I'll show you that. Okay, so the first thing, the request was to compare our seats for alternative ed with other districts a similar size. So the first thing I did is I really went back to ed code to figure out exactly what is alternative ed. So California ed code is right up there. This is what it says. It says that we're supposed to maximize opportunities for students to develop their positive values, that our program should recognize the best learning takes place when a student wants to learn, it encourages the self motivation and allows students to follow their own interests, it allows parents, teachers and students to work together to develop the plan, and it maximizes opportunities for the students, teachers and parents to react to the changing world, and all the teachers and students must be volunteers in these programs. Additionally, the California Department Ed website lists these as types of alternative education. So they list early college high schools and middle college high schools. Both of these are programs where high school students have the ability to attend the JC and earn up to two years of credit along with their diploma. The difference being is middle college high schools are actually located on a JC campus while the early college high schools can be either on the JC campus, could be an autonomous building somewhere or on the high school campus. Then there's also magnet schools, new technology schools, dual language immersion schools, independent study, our online schools, schools within a school, continuation high school, and other schools targeting specific populations. Our first, our LCAP goal one is to provide that coherent, rigorous and relevant teaching and learning program to graduate college and career-ready students. And looking back at what the state says alternative education is, here are some of the programs that we have. We do have an early college magnet program at Pioneer High where the students are bused five days a week to the JC to take JC classes in order to complete both their high school diploma and get college credits. The same thing happens with the University Center, Elsie Allen. The students are going to Sonoma State to get those credits and this is at no cost to the students. In order to prepare students for high school, struggling students are part of the Bridge Academy at all five middle schools to help them make that adjustment when they get to high school to become successful. We also have an independent study program. We have Ridgeway Continuation High School. We have Art Quest at Santa Rosa High, which draws in students from throughout our district and surrounding areas, as does the International Baccalaureate Program at Montgomery High School. LCAP goal two is looking to increase student and family wellness and engagement through a full-service community school model. We see that in our Bridge Academy at all five middle schools. We also see it at Ridgeway, Independent Study, and at the Grace Program at Pioneer and Mid Rose at Elsie Allen. Alternative education instruction is supposed to meet the same standards as a comprehensive high school in terms of curriculum, instruction, instructional minutes and student performance. They are to earn credits in the alternative schools of choice equivalent to what they would have earned in a traditional school. The state also encourages parents and students to ask the school, is it accredited through WASC and is it A to G? A to G meaning, does the University of California and the state of Calif, or California State Universities recognize their core classes as being college prep? And we also do have a regulation 6146.1 that says students may earn their diploma through a board-approved alternative diploma pathway. That's at Ridgeway. So these are the five, Santa Rosa's first, but there are five other districts I looked at in the nearby area that had a similar, nobody was quite matching ours, population, enrollment population. The figures are from 2014-15. This is from ed data. It is the most recent data on ed data. And you can see by the different schools that there's a wide varying degree of changes. So I'll tell you a little bit about some of the other schools. Napa Valley Unified has quite a few students, 7.4% of their population compared to our 3.9, in alternative schools or schools of choice. Napa Valley has multiple elementary magnet schools. They have an independent school that serves K-12, independent study schools that serves K-12, and a technology high school in addition to some linked learning programs, which is why they have a much larger number that they're representing here. Vallejo City Unified is in the same position. They have, for their alternative schools, they have a continuation high school. They also have their own community day school within the district that serves that population of students. And they are, they were at one point a wall-to-wall academy district, which is representative of the 2014-15 school year. Vacaville Unified, they also have an early college high school located both on their high school campus and on the Vacaville location of Solano Community College. And they have a magnet charter high school and a continuation high school. Antioch Unified, they have three alternative high schools. One of the high schools is the typical continuation high school. There is another high school that is dedicated to K-12 independent studies. And then one is dedicated to linked learning in the medical field. And that's why they're posting such large numbers on their alternative schools. Pittsburgh Unified also has a high school that serves continuation high schools, but it also includes a portion for opportunity students and special education students to recoup their credits. And they also have linked learning programs. What I see from this, it was really difficult to get additional data, but what I gleaned from this is that most districts aren't reporting their numbers accurately. And now with the California dashboard, we're really going to have to pay attention to how we're posting our figures for what we do. This slide is just comparing our attendance, our enrollment from 2012 to 13 through 2016-17. And I'd like to draw your attention to the continuation row. And it shows that we've had a low enrollment in 2013, 1213, and then it increased. And then it decreased in 2016-17. That decrease is because we rolled the small necessary schools into their comprehensive high schools. So we've had a alternative education committee that's met since September 2015 and they've identified some necessary components of an alternative education program. These programs need to address college and career readiness for all of our students. Very importantly, they have to have a connection with the students. Most of the students that we talked to talked about the connection with their teacher, talked about the connection to the programs. They felt it was a safe harbor, a place where they could go and know that everything would be okay. We need to have resources for the social emotional issues that students encounter and there needs to be a holistic approach to an educational program designed to make, help students succeed. So our next steps are to define our alternative education opportunities in the district. And we need to continue working with our secondary sites to identify students who would benefit from an alternative education program. We need to keep refining our education, alternative education programs at each secondary site. And we are continuing to explore creating a bridge program for ninth graders at all high schools.
Well, that will take questions from the board.
Thank you. Questions, Director Kristoff? Do you want to start?
Thank you very much, Lori and Steve. I, Anna might be here tonight too, but obviously she's not, she's got other opportunities as well. But I appreciate, you know, the effort and I, and once you showed this to me and I see where the definition of alt-ed can be a little broader according to the state, you know, the numbers get kind of squirrely and it's really hard to do this and I understand that. So I'm probably in my questions and what I'm going to say, it really, I don't know if comparing ourselves to other districts is the right way to approach it. It's really not. This is, has a historic background. I don't know if you remember, but when I first came on the board, the first couple of years, there was a definite agreement among board members that we needed to explore more alt-ed opportunities that we have. We're having students who were dropping out, who had attendance problems. So we're not talking about programs like the IB program or the early college magnet program and that kind of stuff, although it's understandable, they are alternate programs. So at that time, we kind of, you know, agreed that maybe a cookie cutter model of Ridgeway, which was very successful, wasn't the way to go. Not another one, you know, and just fill that, but to try some other, you know, alternatives. And the small necessaries had come on board when we were here. And I know we, we need to tweak things and make sure things are working well, but I'm concerned because I think when we look at Mesa, for example, which closed, I don't think but a few students graduated from high, Santa Rosa High School. I think we had some go to Ridgeway. I think that we had kids drop out. I don't know the numbers again. My understanding is that Mid Rose will not exist as an alternative school next year. That saddens me because I think there's 65 or so students in that program. Where do they go? You know, and I know that some of those students tried regular programs this year, didn't do very well in them because there was some problems with credentialing. So those children deserve some kind of support, some kind of broader kind of way for us to help them succeed. So I'm really talking about kids that are, you know, that are in danger of dropping out, not going to summer school and taking, you know, independent study and make up a bunch of credits at the end, you know, because I'm afraid that the kids are going to drop out. I have a ton of questions, but I don't think I want to, I don't want to ask. I mean, I think we can do this separately or in a different session. My real point is that I think we might be moving in the wrong direction in terms of capturing these kids. The fires were devastating. We lost a lot of kids. And I know that the poor kids or kids in poverty are the ones that are, you know, it's very difficult for them, you know, in terms of, it's difficult for all kids, of course, but in terms of focusing on education, they may not have the support there. Our demographic shift for me would say that our concept that we worked with several years ago, developing more programs that are onsite, I think the one phrase in all, in the literature that you provided for us, and I appreciate that, coming from the state of California is, one size does not fit all. And I think we have a very successful program in Grace at the Pioneer Campus. I don't know if that's something that needs to be replicated, but we need to look into making sure that we have a place for the kids that are on the fringe right now for a lot of reasons. You know, school safety is a part of it, mental health issues, poverty, as our district grows in poverty, I think we really need to find ways to help kids succeed. And that needs to be done on each campus. And I think the bridge program is a great idea. I think there's a recognition that we have some good programs in place, but I don't see them flourishing. I see them kind of like in limbo right now. So my point with all of this, and I appreciate your work, is we need more and we need to focus more on these kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Fong.
I'm going to have to echo what Director Kristoff said. Lori, thank you very much for that research. I think that some of those numbers were difficult to get and I would also agree with you that not only are they hard to get, but they're, in every district, they're different. So that's up to the state of California figure how they want to count that stuff. I think when we set our strategic goals as a board, that we are going to really be thinking about our students who really are not being successful in our schools for all the different reasons that they're not being successful. And of course, it's not their fault. I would also say that we have so many teachers who just bend over backwards to help our students, but they are, excuse me. They are really stuck in a system, in a system that is very, very tight, that they cannot do the things they want and they cannot do it with 35, 34, 30 kids in their classroom, even 26, when we have so many needy kids and, you know, for all different reasons. I would agree with you, Ron, about the bridge program where it's viable and it's important and it's wonderful. What happens after, I mean, what happens in 10th grade? So that's one thing there. So how do we get more kids to graduate and complete A to G? Maybe we can go back to what you were talking about, President Close, about design thinking in terms of how we can provide for our kids and how we can become a destination district for these kids, not a district that they want to flee or schools they want to flee because oftentimes kids are just running to something else. They don't know what they're running, running to. But let's have them stay with us, run to us, and we can take care of them. Thank you.
Director Sheffield.
Something that Director Fong said about kids fleeing, I'm just wondering, looking at the next steps, the second arrow, continuing working with sites to identify students. Just wanted to know what that looks like, that identification process? How does it involve the student? How does it involve the families, the school staff?
Well, I think you have to start at the beginning is, what are we going to develop as our alternative programs? And that has to be answered at each site, how they're going to develop their programs. We have had alternative ed meetings. We haven't expanded it to include all of these other programs that I've introduced tonight.
Another idea, Director Sheffield, is that schools identify students in need in many, many ways through a multi-tiered system of supports. Every high school really focuses on freshmen and that critical entrance semester and they build them into their SIPs, they build information in classes and supports. So that's, that's where the high schools currently are trying to identify those students before they reach the credit failures, try to identify them socially, emotionally if they're very fragile and they need that extra support. So each high school is very aware of it. I will not disagree that we continue to need work in that area and we have to look at that holistic kind of view, but it's a very important item for high school administrators when they look at that data. And they are trying to identify those students and some schools are doing a magnificent job of it. The Grace integration is a great model for how that happened and how that worked right into their system, continues to be supportive environment at the same time, being part of the Pioneer Campus, meets all the WASC accreditation. So that, that role in was a, was a really good model. And they in fact have a freshman program and really work hard to identify freshmen in need. So I think there's a lot of things that we can build with our existing knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Director Sheffield, were you asking for some data? Maybe I was.
I wasn't asking for data. I just wanted to see where we're going with this. I mean, if we have successful models that we're replicating at other schools and you say these schools are doing a great job, that should be the model, that should be the standard that we're using in all of our schools.
Yeah. Thank you very much for the report. I know that we have some very, really important and special programs in the district that really work to serve kids who are not always thriving in our comprehensive high schools. The Grace model is especially successful, I think. We're going to be redoing our strategic plan or at least sort of adapting it to reflect where we are at now this summer with Dr. Ayala. And I think at that time, that would be a good time to look at maybe some data about which, which of our alternative schools are best serving students and also maybe some best practices from other districts to see if we want to include some of those ideas in our new strategic plan and where we prioritize that. And then with respect to, you know, graduation rate or NA through G, that we're going to be talking about other districts' models around that and best practices around that next, at our next meeting. Thank you.
I have one more thing.
All right.
Just one more thing. Because I see Ms. Jablonsky in the audience, I do want to recognize Susan Jablonsky, sitting right there. See your waiver hand? An integral part of why Grace is as successful as it is. So thank you for all your work.
Can I just say that it's Tyler Alborn, one of the teachers sitting right next to From the Elsie program. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay, F3, it's an action item, approval of second interim report for the fiscal year 2017-18. It's an action item, approval of second interim report for the fiscal year 2017-18.
Good evening, Board. Superintendent Andre Bell, Assistant Superintendent for Business, and Joel Dantos, Executive Director of Fiscal Services, and we're here to give you a presentation on the second So tonight, we will be presenting the timelines, requirements, expenditures, and revenue, the multi-year projections, and our next steps going forward after second interim. Currently on this timeline is all school districts will follow these guidelines shaped by the state of California. We're into the second interim, which is due by March 15th, to the County Office of Ed for their oversight and review. The reporting requirements comprise of as normal, the revenues, our expected expenditures, and our end balance or our reserves. We also must include a multi-year projection for the current fiscal year and the two out years to make sure that fiscal solvency for the district. Currently, we have a qualified position for this. So there are three reporting requirements that we can have. We are self-reporting to Sonoma County Office of Ed. As we stated earlier, we're in a qualified position right now that meets, we do not meet our financial obligations for two sequential fiscal years. And I'll turn it over to Joel to give you an update on the financials.
Thank you, Andre.
Okay, so the updates for revenues include this second interim from the last update that was provided in January with the governor's budget update. We've got a preliminary enrollment report from our demographer that we, that we worked on that's included in this second interim report. And we're finalizing that demographer, that enrollment report with the demographer. We have the plan to bring that to the board in April, but, so this is a preliminary report we got for them, and it's better than what we had in January, but we're taking those extra steps in these complex times to make sure this report is really as accurate as possible. So what else is included in these updated revenues are the fiscalization, fiscal stabilization plan included one revenue item that are updated in this second interim as well. And some key items to remember with these revenues is we continue to budget the fire insurance in 1718 revenue, as well as the proposed 1819 one-time money in the governor's January budget. Okay. So here is a snapshot of the assumptions that are included in the second interim. We're continuing with the assumptions that the governor provided in his January budget proposal, and we'll get new information. That information will be updated in May with the governor's May revise. We don't anticipate many changes, but again, we'll come forward with the next financial report with the updates from the governor's May revise, as well as using the, so this is for general fund, and we're using these projected ADA numbers, using the demographers' enrollment projections, and we'll come back in May. Our next financial interim report, as Andre mentioned, we're moving forward with a qualified certification for this report again. But, so our next financial report will be a third interim provided in May, and we'll come forward with the May revise and the demographers' final enrollment projections. Okay, so moving on to the expenditures, what's included in the expenditures now? So the second interim report is updated as of January 31st actuals. So we've updated our original budget items, our line items, with a new projection to finish out the year based on actuals, that's one thing. And then another thing that's included is the fiscal stabilization plan. And it's important to note that the fiscalization plan, fiscal stabilization plan that's included in this interim report is based on the fiscal stabilization budget projections. Now, we do have to true those up based on actuals, so this fiscalization plan will be a process. And the process is, we started with the budget projections, and now we'll, we'll true those up with actual numbers. And again, you'll see, you'll see some of that coming forward in the future financial reports, as well as when we adopt our budget and for 1819. And again, well, just some quick notes that those expenditures then continue to include the fire-related work that'll be removed in out years, as well as the one-time instructional materials purchases this year. So with all those factors, we've got our new snapshot of our multi-year projection budget. And we're looking at now in 1920, a reduction of 2.3 million that'll continue to evolve as the process goes forward. Because of this reduction, we are continuing with a qualified certification. So if you can go to the next slide. So here's a snapshot of what our ending balances look like with our current budget report. As you can see, we have the 1819 one-time money in a signed line item broken out for this ending balances. And the current projection with the reductions, with the budget solutions that we identified, we do project in 1920 to have, to meet our minimum 3% reserve. And that's a graph showing our current reserve line, the minimum 3% and our, our reserve and where we fall moving forward. Thank you.
So basically, as we stated earlier, the second interim will be a qualified, which means that we will not be able to meet our financial obligations for our, actually, sequential two years. That being said, I really want the board to know that the, all the hard work that we've done and the district has done in the last two years, it points towards a positive going forward. I mean, we really are on the right track. I believe that we continue with the Budget Advisory Committee, we continue to work in looking at identifying areas that scope of reductions going forward, that we will, should be able to continue this process and get the district back on solid financial standings. So our next step, as we indicated, is the final demographics report, which we'll bring before the board at the April 11th meeting. We'll bring it back to, for discussion on April 11th, for approval on April 25th. We have the third interim report that's due in, in June, so we can have that completed by the first of June. And then we'll continue to work with the Budget Advisory Committee. One item before the Budget Advisory Committee is a discussion on the one-time use of the funds, and basically, the Budget Advisory Committee, when it meets on the 28th, will come back and make recommendations to the superintendent. The committee actually believes that the best use of the one-time funds would be, the majority of the committee believes that it would be best used in putting that one-time funding into the reserves going forward. So that completes our presentation.
Director Kristoff.
Just one quick question. Joel, you mentioned that we're hiring a demographer to refine our numbers. I know they're really tricky right now with all that's going on. Is that correct?
Yes, we've been working with a demographer.
Okay. So we have been working with a demographer on the numbers for how long have we been doing that?
It's actually the same demographer that's done our map scenarios, so he's been looking at our, our student enrollment demographics since.
December.
January, December?
January, okay. Because we have not done this in the past, you know, we've had a reform, which I'm not saying it's better, but I just.
Yeah, we did in the past, prior to me being superintendent, so we liked the work of Larry, the demographer. And so we wanted that company to do our current numbers, especially in light of the fires, as also in light of the development, housing developments that are going, have been, are going on.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Poor Larry is never going to shake. Larry, the demographer. I tried not to say that, but I can't remember his last name. It really stuck. Anybody else? It's an action item.
So moved.
Moved by Director Kristoff, second by Director Anderson. Roll call vote, please.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, and we go to F4, discussion item on the fire recovery.
Thank you. Andre Bell, Assistant Superintendent for the Business, and we also have Steve Mazzara, who is the Assistant Superintendent for Family Services, as well as Jason Lee, who will be, will be updating on the fire recovery update. As you're aware, we brought this item to the board and for the first time in November, as to, right after the fires, and so now we're bringing updates as to the staffs moving forward on items from the recovery of the Tubbs Fire. So basically, pardon me, the district as a whole has been in a, has restored most of the facilities that we have. The two facilities that were destroyed during the fire were the Santa Rosa High School Farm at Alba Lane and the Hidden Valley Satellite School. So basically, we will give you pretty much an update on those two facilities first. At the farm, we have restored all of the irrigation. The well is back in now and complete and been tested. We've also restored power to the wells going out that way. We've also removed all the damaged trees from the property, including moving them out of the way of the power lines that were out at the site itself. The latest is on the replacement of the truck. We just found out this week that it will not be here in March, and we're working on to get in there, production date on that. FEMA is actually, has been inspected the site on Monday, and this is one of the first steps that we have to do, and making a report list for FEMA to seek reimbursements from FEMA going forward. So we will start on Friday as far as putting the data into the FEMA website for Alba Lane, as well as Hidden Valley Satellite. County Office of Emergency Services has not released the Alba Lane property back to the district yet. What we have found out is the Environmental Protection Agency was contacted by the County Office of Emergency Services to return to Alba Lane for further soil scraping. When Army Corps did the first soil scraping, as most sites that they did in, after the fire, they only scraped down to six inches, then moved on to other sites, and we're coming back to any additional sites that needed additional work after this particular point, and Alba Lane falls into that category. So this is pictures of Hidden Valley Elementary Satellite. As you can see here, the Army Corps has completely removed all the debris from the site, and we're moving forward with the next steps regarding Hidden Valley Elementary Satellite. The insurance, we've been working with the insurance company, and we have completed all the data necessary for containment and collection of insurance as far as the contents reports that we have. We've also been preparing the claim that we, for all of the items lost during the fire, we have been reimbursed from the insurance company for all the work done thus far, which includes all the site cleanups. We have received the funding for the truck and the well and pump and all the tree removals. So all of that has been paid and invoiced directly, so the district has not put out any funds for these items that have been coming forward. So as I stated earlier, our next step with FEMA is to complete the possible reports, and they did the site inspections this Monday and Tuesday, and they will develop a project, a project list, and then we'll input the data into the FEMA reports. Project SER is basically a federal program for school and emergency response to violence, and in 2016, they also include national emergencies. So the California Office of Ed submitted a request to the federal government and have heard back. The district submitted 14 items, and we heard back from CDE that they pared it down to four items, and it's approximately about $5.1 million. Timeline to receive and review is about three months, and then will be no more after that particular point in time. So as we've all constantly heard, enrollment in October was about 16,170 students. We know through our data that 817 students lost their homes during the fire, and we also know that there's been an excess of about 537 students from the district.
I just want to take a brief time to talk about some of the positives that came out of this, and one of it was the response, the quick and rapid response as a community professionals that we had to support our employees through this difficult time. We know that so many of them are still actually dealing with and coming to terms with the impact of losing their homes. Every single one of us knows more than one person who's trying to still serve our children every day in a variety of capacities while figuring out how to kind of rebalance their lives as a result of what happened in October. So I just wanted to include this because this is a positive show of what we have done for each other. SRTAs donated, reached out to their members, and Will and I have the actual opportunity and pleasure to look to see how we can actually help people on a weekly basis as we continue to get requests for people for days as a result of their, how they've been impacted by the fire. CSCA, the same thing, has donated hours to support their members, and this is just a small piece of what both of those associations have done. As individual associations, I know that they've also given cash grants out to people on various levels depending on the severity of the impact. So this was important to include to show that there were some, as a community responded, SRCS responded to help, help its members and its employees.
As part of that support, we know we need to increase counseling services. So two things that we are already in process on is, we developed a proposal for a grant for an integrated wellness center that would serve fire victims year-round and give them extra counseling support, academic and even possibly medical, dental. So that grant has been partially funded. We are continuing to look at other donors to try to fully fund that. We will be bringing to the board the first steps toward that integrated wellness center with a position to create a clinical supervisor, so we can begin to hire staff that be, hopefully will be in place ready for the summer. And then also, we've already had increased counseling services at some of the heavily subjected fire schools, and that would be Hidden Valley, Correo, and Rincon Valley. They picked up additional services, and we, as we develop our information for next year's LCAP, we hope to include additional counseling services for all students.
I'm pleased to be representing our curriculum and instruction team within the district. Debbie Bettini, Director of CTE and College and Career Designists. As you know, there was a loss of instructional time with the Sonoma County fires in October, and in response, our team really began exploring a waiver for the Smarter Balance Assessment. And at the March 7th meeting, our board approved submitting a waiver request to the California Department of Education to forego all CASP or state testing for the 2017-2018 school year. Our team has also been working really hard on providing additional enrichment, summer opportunities for our students. For instance, we are in the process of, excuse me, in the process of exploring a partnership with the Sonoma State University around their. process of exploring a partnership with the Sonoma State University around their Excel for Youth program, which provides a series of sessions ranging from coding to creative writing in the summer. As you know, we also have a partnership with Luther Burbank Center for the Arts to offer our mariachi and visual arts summer camps. This year, we are adding dance, and the YMCA is also offering a project-based learning science camp, which is pretty exciting. In CTE, we currently have nine students participating in the Construction Core Program, which is a partnership between the North Coast Builders Exchange, the CTE Foundation, and the Sonoma County Office of Education. Last year, we had three students, so we're really excited that we have nine students enrolled this year, which is actually about almost 25% of the total enrollment for the program this year. This summer, actually, the students will be participating in a Pathway to Paycheck, two-week summer boot camp, where they actually get hands-on experience working in the industry. So right now, they're getting training on the different aspects of the industry, and then in the summertime, they'll actually get to apply their learnings as well. There also is an opportunity for them to earn a page type-in, as well as SRJC credit. One of the great things that have, has come from our development of our district CTE advisory meeting, our, and committee, are our different partnerships that we're forming. We're strengthening those, and as a result of that, we've really strengthened our partnership with 101 Manufacturing. And they're offering, they're calling it a fast-track program, and it has two kind of segues. One is a design and fabric, design and fabrication strand, excuse me, and I'm gonna try not to mess this up, a mechatronics strand. And what mechatronics, mecatrom, holy moly, what mechatronics is, is around electricity, circuits, coding, and things of that nature. And so we're really, not only promoting that in our CTE programs, but for all students as well. So we're having our college and career counselors really promote that at our sites, and we're really pleased with the enrollment that we have thus far. I'm also getting connected with Job Link. I got connected to their new point person at Workforce Development Committee meeting with the North Coast Builders Exchange, so we're making some connections with that. CHOPS has expressed interest in providing more opportunities for students too, so they're going to be sharing some of their summer experiences that we can certainly take advantage of. And then I'm also going to be working, again, with our work-based learning coordinators to identify additional opportunities as well that we certainly can promote within our schools. I also wanted to mention too, which I know is not up on the Board, but I wanted to say that Director White has really been working with our Community Faith Association, and has brought forward another opportunity for our students to actually help support building 100 storage sheds for families that lost their homes. And in April, there's a kickoff event where they're going to actually build 10 of these storage sheds to kind of get an idea, okay, well, how does this work, and what's the prototype? And then in June, they're gonna build another 90, and then actually deliver them to fire victims' homes. And it's almost, it's a sign of hope. So it's the first structure on, on their parcel. And so we're really excited to not only promote that in CTE, but again, promote that as a way for students to give back to the community in which they belong in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Board? Director Kristoff?
Thank you guys very much. I want to thank Andre and Debbie for being at the AG meeting and doing a very nice job to allay a lot of the fears and so on that, you know, arose in this meeting. The AG Committee is a wonderful committee. You know, thank Brad and Don and Lisa, you know, and the all the parents and so on that are there. But it's just another iteration of how the fire affects us all. Where do you, where are the animals gonna go? When we get, can we get back on the property? And anyway, it's no easy answers, and appreciate the fact that, you know, we're doing what we can, and it's a very important program. Thank you.
Director Anderson? Thank you. Thanks for everything you're doing. I am just curious, what types of items got dropped from, that you went from 14 to four? What types of items got dropped on the Project SERVE?
Basically, it was the, most of the items that were going to be covered by the insurance company for going forward, we put all of the items in at the beginning of the program. And so the items that got dropped were most of the items that Project SERVE believes are gonna be reimbursed from the insurance company.
Like all of us are doing. Okay. And do we know when we're gonna hear back on the waiver?
Probably August. Realistically, that's what the state tells us, is that if even they, the federal government says anything, it'll be so far down the road.
Okay. And sort of in general, you know, you have so many wonderful things that you're creating and, and having available, and, you know, as a parent at one of these schools and, you know, a fire victim, how are we supposed to hear about this? Because I feel like you're saying all these things that, you know, additional counseling and CTE programs and summer programs, and I haven't heard about any of it.
On the, on the counseling side of it, you know, we have had parent meetings at those schools, and we announced it to their, and the administrators at those schools are kind of wrapping that into their own communication. We, we haven't announced there are more additional services to students because the students that have needs are at, at school. We haven't announced the full-time counseling services. We're looking, of course, because we haven't had the people provided. We did do some announcements at Thanksgiving and Christmas, and we tried to use the administrators to send those things out. We sent direct emails to the fire victim families that we knew about and had in our system, and we tried to do some direct contact at those times.
And then in regards to the, the additional offerings, I mean, we're definitely promoting it at our sites as best as we can, primarily with the CTE, it's within our CTE programs, but also with our college and career counselors, counseling staff, site administrators. We're trying to get the word out. What I, what I found, find interesting in this position is I'm learning that there are so many different resources out there, and so I'm trying to gather as much as I can really to leverage the existing resources that we have and develop the partnerships furtherers and get that out to the sites as fast as we can, because there's a lot of wonderful things happening out in the community. But I definitely understand that you want to know what's going on so our kids can take advantage of it. So we will definitely do our best to get that information out so students can take advantage of it.
And I think too, we need to look at, why is it? So we need to find out, why is that connection not there if you're not hearing about, or if, you know, the community or parents are not hearing about it. So it's something we need to take a hard look at, and it is, it is a challenge that we face with many things that we think we communicate, but it doesn't quite hit the mark. Maybe this is a great LMC topic. I know we've talked about communication before, but I think it's something we can't give up on talking about because it's not, it's not apparently hitting the mark.
And, and maybe it's just as simple as having, you know, a student come and interview you for the student newspaper, or a parent interview you for the parent newspaper, because I think that, you know, our off, our office, school offices are so busy that they get all this information, but the outflow is not always there. And so, you know, it could be just maybe going more to the direct end user, I don't know. And then I'm wondering, how do we get a shed?
That is an excellent question. I will follow up with Director White on that, and we can certainly get that information to you.
Anybody else? Director Fong?
Superintendent Guinamora, I just had one question about the SBAC waiver that we passed. Can you just update us on the state, state's answer?
The last email we got from Deputy Superintendent Carrick was needing our minutes for proof that we had a public hearing, that we opened it up to the public. So those, I think, were sent to him, and we are basically waiving the test at this point.
Director Pugh?
There are, there are two items which, which I'd like a little more information on, but probably not tonight, because some research would have to be done. But I'm really curious about what is the future of Hidden Valley Elementary School Satellite? I understand the land is now clear, so what's gonna go in there? And what programs are, are gonna be different programs, same programs? What's gonna take place? So, and then I, and then beyond that, I'd like to know what the timeline is to restore it, to whatever it's going to be, or whatever it has been in the past. And then I wouldn't, and it wouldn't be right for me to then not also mention that I have a concern about the high school farm on Alba Lane. What is that gonna look like? What's gonna take place there? I understand they have to clear more earth and get it clean and certified, but there's a lot of things that could be going on now, such as hiring an architect to worry about what it looks like, what's gonna go in there, or whatever. Of course, we would hire the architect by the hour.
Who has to report every six minutes of his life.
But I'm, but I am curious, what, what does, what's the build-out for the farm? What's it gonna look like? What's, what's gonna take place there and that type of thing?
Yeah. We definitely have ideas. I see Lisa Peels in the audience, and we've talked about, you know, the dream, what we'd like to have out up there. I think right now, our focus is negotiating with insurance, because in order to build, we need to know exactly how much we're gonna get. And that's kind of where we, that's where we are right now, is we're going back and forth with the insurance. And in fact, I think I may have mentioned in my update that we're at a point where we need some help. We need a negotiator to come in and help us, because we're not professional negotiators when it comes to the depths and the level now that we're at with Alba Lane property. And so that will be coming forward, where a contract will be coming forward. Basically, we need someone to go in and negotiate for us now. Once we have clear idea about the numbers, then we can get the renderings. I want renderings. I want to see what it looks like. If we're, people are, people want to help us, want to donate and want to be a part of it, but it's hard if there's not something for them to see visibly what it looks like. And so if we, as soon as we get closer to knowing exactly how much money we're gonna get, we can, we'll do that. And I think it doesn't prevent us to, from starting the process of finding someone to do the renderings, that kind of thing. I think we can get started on that as well. So a lot of stuff's still in process, but know that we are working our hardest to keep, continue to move forward with a lot of setbacks, setbacks, especially at, at Alba Lane.
Do you, do you think Alba Lane will be open by fall for, not for facilities, but for use of the crops and all that?
I hope so. We just need to get clearance from the EPA. You know, once we get the clearance from the EPA, then the, the kids can get on there. Right now, the adults can go on, but it's the kids that are not being allowed to enter the property. And I cannot predict what they're gonna, what they're gonna do. It's our goal, it's our hope.
And will, the Hidden Valley Satellite School, obviously, it'll be impossible to have something there up and running. Will all the students stay at Hidden Valley?
They, they will at this time because enrollment is so impacted. It's really, really impacted there. And who's, and what we are sadly anticipating is that would, could potentially go down even farther at the end of the school year. And so we're being very cautious about, you know, based on what we just went through in terms of our budget reductions, we're being very cautious about staffing, about, you know, anything to do with decisions around all of our facilities. I mean, it's not even just the Hidden Valley Elementary. You're gonna be seeing a report coming up about all of our facilities as we plan for CCLA and what we need to do there, and the other schools that are also suffering from low enrollment. We have some planning to do. So yet we, we are not moving forward at this point with anything at Hidden Valley until we see what those numbers stabilize. At the numbers that Jason has right now, all the students can be accommodated at the Hidden Valley school site right now. So these are discussions we need to have with various stakeholders, but right now for us, we're looking at enrollment.
Thank you.
Director Kristoff?
One of the questions that was asked at the meeting, and I know we don't have the answer for it, was how did Cardinal Newman open so quickly? And I don't know whether it has to do with, you know, state issues or state law or whatever. That's not a question I expect anybody to answer, but it does, you know, it does beg the question, you know, what did they do to, you know, take that facility and open it up to all those students? And we are waiting to get our, our plot, you know, opened up and Hidden Valley opened up. So I'm not sure where, you know, the answer lies, but it might be, you know, something to explore.
I think, I think the answer to your question, Director Kristoff, is that the damage was not as great. There was, there was a manageable amount of damage, and they've moved people around, and, and they haven't rebuilt anything. They've just reorganized where people go.
I, I don't know about Cardinal Newman, but what I do know, yeah, but what I do know is I can promise you, we're not doing anything to stand in the way of delaying opening any facility. Alba Lane, we are not, there's not something we're trying to hold back about not getting it back in shape and ready for production. That, we want it done as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, our hands are tied by certain things, one of them being the EPA, and one of them being money. And so once we get the insurance settled, once we get clearance, it's, it's, it's gonna be a fast-moving thing, because we do want to get kids back on the farm.
Okay. Thanks a lot for your report, keeping us updated. And I know it is hard to push out information. That seems to be a constant problem, and, and I see the way that things go out, and somehow it gets, it doesn't always get to the, to the receiver. And that would be a great topic, I think, for the LMC, because communication is really critical. And right now, things are happening so fast. Everything is in this accelerated timeframe. So I know you're all working really hard, and this just added a big chunk of work to your already busy workload, so I appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Okay. We've got action items coming up on roofing and HVAC.
Correct.
First one being Maria Carrillo, F5.
I have the first one down as LC Allen. Oh, hell, they changed it. Okay. Good evening, Superintendent and Board. We're here tonight to request the award of bid for Maria Carrillo High School Reroofing and HVAC Project. On December 20th, the Facilities Department presented to the Board for approval to move forward six roofing and HVAC projects, and approval was granted. Maria Carrillo was one of them. We did receive bids, and we're very happy with the bids received. So we are requesting tonight that the bid be approved to move forward with the project for Maria Carrillo, with the low bidder being Matrix Incorporated at $5,309,000 rounding off, which is actually a savings of $420,000 of our projection. With that said, is there any questions?
Director Anderson? So we can't talk about Carrillo roofs without talking about the theater roof, and if you're going to be doing work on the theater, I think it's worth just taking a look at what it would be, what it would take to fix the loud clanging that was a design flaw in the original design of that theater. And it happens when either the interior, well, usually, well, it happens almost every time you're using the theater, but especially if there are people breathing warm air inside the theater and outside the theater at night, it's cold. You get a loud clanging as if everybody was up slamming doors and everybody else was banging hammers on metal railing. And it often happens when you have a guest speaker, or you're in the middle of a student doing a soliloquy, or, you know, some really sweet, gentle music, and all of a sudden, the roof starts clanging. And it's been that way for 20 years, ever since the school was built. And, you know, I don't know which urban legend to believe, but, you know, there's, they say that the designer was sued and then left town, and, you know, there's a lot of stories around it. But if we're taking anything off of that roof, I would love to see what it would take to fix that. And if necessary, I think the community is so fed up with that clanging that we could maybe pursue some matching funds or something.
This is the first I'm hearing of that issue. We can look into it. I don't know if it's that is to deal with the HVAC system. So I will coordinate with our engineers to make sure, see what we can do to be able to look into that situation better.
From what I've heard, it's not the HVAC, it's more that the roof itself is made of some metal that expands and contracts and...
Correct. Once you get that air movement that's going across there, especially if you have people in there with that heat and the cooling, and it goes in there, that's what expands that deck and allows it to bang against some of the joists and different things. So there is some items that we can do, and since we are touching that area, I will definitely look into that and get with my engineers and see what we can be able to come up with.
Okay, we'll follow up on that. You guys will follow up on that?
We will follow up on that.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so you'll follow up with the superintendent on that first?
Yes.
Okay, great. This is the action item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Director Kristoff, second by Director Fong. Roll call vote, please.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Student Board Member?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, and we go to F6, Roofing and HVAC Bid Award for LC Allen.
Thank you. And it will be exactly the same verbiage, it was six projects approved. So with LC, we did receive bids, and once again, Matrix Incorporated was low bidder, and we're requesting that the low bid be approved for $7,885,187. And is there any questions?
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Director Pugh, second by Director Kristoff. Roll call vote, please.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Student Board Member?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. One more roof, James Monroe, F8.
Okay, James Monroe. Matrix Incorporated, once again, was low bidder, and we're requesting that the low bid be approved for $7,885,187. And is there any questions?
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Director Pugh, second by Director Kristoff. Roll call vote, please.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Student Board Member?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And here's our third one.
F11 deals with ensuring those individuals who should be prohibited from buying a firearm or that information is in a background check system.
Thank you. And Lori, when we did resolutions about bills earlier in the year related to DACA, and we did a few different bills, we sent the resolutions to the appropriate congressional committee. And so if we could do that again, that would be great. Thank you. And now, take your motion.
And move item F11?
Second.
Moved by Director Pugh, second by Director Sheffield. Roll call vote, please.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Okay, F10, second.
F10 deals with strengthening the nation's mental health infrastructure and firearm prohibitions for at-risk individuals. I'd like to move the item.
Second.
Moved by Director Pugh, second by Director Fong. Roll call vote, please.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Student Board Member?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, and here's our third one.
F11 deals with ensuring those individuals who should be prohibited from buying a firearm or that information is in a background check system.
Thank you. And Lori, when we did resolutions about bills earlier in the year related to DACA, and we did a few different bills, we sent the resolutions to the appropriate congressional committee. And so if we could do that again, that would be great. Thank you. And now, take your motion.
And move item F11?
Second.
Moved by Director Pugh, second by Director Sheffield. Roll call vote, please.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Student Board Member?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And here's our third one.
F11 deals with ensuring those individuals who should be prohibited from buying a firearm or that information is in a background check system.
Thank you. And Lori, when we did resolutions about bills earlier in the year related to DACA, and we did a few different bills, we sent the resolutions to the appropriate congressional committee. And so if we could do that again, that would be great. Thank you. And now, take your motion.
And move item F11?
Second.
Moved by Director Pugh, second by Director Sheffield. Roll call vote, please.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Student Board Member?
Aye.
Okay, F10, second.
F10 deals with strengthening the nation's mental health infrastructure and firearm prohibitions for at-risk individuals. I'd like to move the item.
Second.
Moved by Director Pugh, second by Director Fong. Roll call vote, please.
Director Pugh?